It's six o'clock, we'll call a committee of the whole meeting to order if the clerk would please pick the role.
Morefka, here's Jones.
Here.
March.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the August 27th, 2018 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Is that a motion to accept as written?
A motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Morefka, second by trustee Parker.
Morefka? Yes. Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
March?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Public comment.
Hello everybody, Jim Belana from Aqua. We're closed. October 1st is the closing date, we're still set, everything's on track and working with your counsel Mr. Mars and our counsel Mr. Spasia, Chris Spasia. It's just finalizing everything now, getting all the easements and all in line and there might be some cleanup stuff afterwards when we come back, but I don't see, foresee anything stopping the closing at this point. Want to thank Marcie and Stacy who work with the billing, they're going to do the last reads this week and then they'll have a final read to us on October 1st, which that'll be our starting reading for them. So to reiterate, the bills, the bills are going to be the same, if not even slightly less than they're charged, getting charged today, but that'll change obviously January 1 of 2020. So the, speaking of that, the routing for the pipeline that do water source, they're still talking to the homeowners, in fact, I obviously said Troy is leading it for us in the project, negotiating with homeowners right now, there's really only four parcels that we, or owners of parcels that we've identified that we need at this point, assuming they're going to cooperate, or we can come to some reasonable terms with easement rights, we'll stick with those four. And when I say about water, you can move the pipe across the street, you have to because it's under pressure, not like wastewater, so, but that's moving along well. We did have the open house, is that the basement?
Last, Wednesday before last.
Yeah, well attended, I think probably about 60 people or so showed up, some due with some questions, some concerns, we had kind of the same open house format we did last time at the high school with all the stations, the workstations, I thought it went well. The whole idea is to keep having these, education, right, educate everybody what's happened, what's going on. So as of October 1st, so many calls with water main break or building issues and everything that, they're going to obviously be, be spiritual with Aqua, we will be getting a welcome packet as soon as we close, we call the corporate and they start sending these welcome packets out to everybody in the, in Peatown that says, hey, you know, if you order, come to us through Water and Sewer, I know the village is looking to put something on, something on their last bill that says, hey, effective October 1st, this is your last bill, after this, you'll be receiving your bill from Aqua. So, everybody's cooperating, everything seems to be moving forward nicely, it's always the last minute scramble with any close, it's like a house or anything else, but, you know, I don't really have much more to add. We are finalizing, in fact, we just got Mr. Mars a draft today for the, the separate, separate extension agreement for the water sewer to the west side of 57, so that, we should be able to finalize that here in the short, we'll probably come to you guys and probably, you'll probably agree to it or take some action on it the first meeting in October or second meeting, whatever you're ready for, but, you know, we're fully committed to it, nothing's changed on that end and hope to get some development over there, so, Mr. Schofield on board, I'm sure that'll happen, right?
Thanks, Jeff.
And any questions for me?
Will you still be accepting, like, if people will drop off their payments at the village hall, or you'd be directing all those to be mailed in or pay online or whatever?
We'll be directing them to use one of all of the four or five different options for it, so, this can be learning for, especially for some of, maybe your senior citizens that, kind of new to them, but it's the same thing with comment or night court or anything else like that, so, plus it takes the burden off of, off of the girls in front in the office. Hopefully next update will be, this is the operations, what is happening, October 2nd, I believe, it might be October 3rd, contract will be out cleaning the tank on Ratchy Road, so, clean that, we'll inspect it, see how, what needs to be done to it, if anything, if it needs to be painted, after the cleaning, we'll paint it, but that's one of the first priorities, I think it's something that'll be very visual, I know it's something you guys were going to do anyway until you just hold off, we'll take care of it, so, hopefully see some visual, you know, trucks and Aqua vehicles around us. So Jim Bonardos will be, I mean, well, working on behalf of Aqua, I guess we could put it that way, but still will be a village employee officially and legally, so, but he's been great, no, I think it's going to be relatively smooth.
Very good. Any questions for him? All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
We will have Dave Rock here, probably shortly, for the police pension annual report, but in the meantime, just open discussion, anything anybody has?
I talked with Bob about the fall planting of trees, did a letter get sent out, you know?
No, I talked to Bob about it, I'll work on those, I just have not had a chance to get those generated and sent out, but he said it's going to be a few weeks, so, I'll get them sent out, you know, here in the next few days and...
So there was, I think, he said we only can do like 18 trees left to the budget, so, that should pretty much finish off Corning, Crawford and Main Street up to West Street, but we also identified some spots on West Street that we want to do in the spring, so we just wondered if we could just, just send the letter out to all those addresses and maybe just say...
I'll get, I have the list upstairs.
The addresses.
Yeah, okay.
And just say, you know, either this fall or next spring, we're, you know, going to be putting a tree in, okay, that way we don't have to do it next year.
Sounds good.
So is that just a notification letter that they're going to get in your town?
Yeah, so in case somebody says, I do not want a tree on the parkway, you know, we've had a couple people that just didn't want it, so we're not, we're just giving them, you know, a heads up, you know?
Sometimes the people don't understand it completely. I've had a couple and I've gone over and explained to them that there's no cost to them, and we keep them watered for the first year, and they're like, oh, okay, so it's, but the compliance level's been extremely, I can't say 100%, but darn close.
And then, what's the update on the zoning on the public works building, is that done?
That's done, yes.
Yeah.
I don't know, I thought we talked about that at the last meeting.
Nope.
Okay, sorry about that. Yeah, no, we went through all three, all three steps at the county and that's all complete, so we've contacted the architect, you know, that we had started working with, so, that's back in motion, so we can start getting some of the ideas of what we need permits for, you know, as far as the work goes and get that moving.
Bob was talking about maybe work with a contractor, is that?
Right, because we have to, we have to have an architect drawing, okay, so we've contacted, it's, let's see, is it Jared, is Jared right?
Jarvis?
Jarvis, thank you, I knew it was a J. So that's who, you know, we contacted, he has worked with Bill, you know, on the police side too, so, he's working on that right now, and I know Bill had just talked to him, Chief Mort, last week, week before, and he was supposed to be bringing some stuff back for us.
Okay, because we were going to try to have a public works meeting, but I wonder if we should just wait until we've got something back from the architect?
Yeah, I can follow up and see where that's at and then put him, put him in contact with you and then...
Yeah, okay.
Was there anything done in that building before it was shut down?
Not really, no, I mean, nothing on any kind of a scale.
And all the approvals by Will County were unanimous, everyone was very supportive?
Yes. There were just a couple different committees that we had to go to and then to the, to the full county board then, so...
The chamber of Congress contacted me about the 750, I understand we agreed to that thing. What's the process to get them up 750?
I'll let Marcie know, we'll just have to...
I can pick it up and take it to the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to see, because it's not on this bill run, so I'll have to see where, when we can get it out.
We'll check and find out, let me know, then I can tell them.
Yep, definitely. What's the date on that? October something?
It's October something, I don't know.
Or November.
I thought it was October.
I'm not sure. Yes, just Fall Fest is October the 20th downtown, Skills USA is doing the vendor crafter portion of it, and then Nancy and Tammy, Cowler are doing the trunk or treat, trunk or treat portion of it, so that's same weekend as the Old Mill Sacker, from what I recall, so, which we've done every year and seems to work out real well, bring a lot of people, you know, into town, downtown, and their downtime from that, and we work with the Old Mill Sacker, we have flyers, they put them in all of the bags for all of the players, so, works out well getting that information out.
How's the progress coming, do you know, on the Meyer Building?
I haven't talked to him, it's been, been a few weeks, he's just been down there working, he wasn't sure, you know, of his exact timeline, you know, when he was going to be ready, but I will plan on trying to catch up with him.
And did he give me a retail operation, is that right?
He wasn't sure exactly what, you know, in our last conversation, you know, what he wanted to do, he was still kind of mulling that over, he was, but he was in there working, you know, updating the building and just kind of doing some interior work.
Well, that's exciting.
It is.
There were a couple other things, I can't remember what they were, that you had mentioned, maybe going downtown.
Well, I've had somebody that had approached me asking about the Hoop Building, and I had talked to Dan and got some information and brought it back, you know, to that person, but I haven't heard anything since then, so that was one.
It seemed like there was one more. The dog room moved to another location?
She moved, yeah, she moved from her old location over into the Tigran Building there, that was at the beginning of September.
She helps drag it in that update, we talked about the safe school, you know, grant?
Yeah, we'll talk about that, I think, in his report.
Okay.
That's something we should do on public works, safe school.
Correct. There was a discussion whether or not to go after the sidewalk at Wilmington Road again or, I had talked to Steve Stein, you know, to see if there was anything that he could think of closer in the area of the school, but I never did hear, you know, anything back from him, he was going to think about it and let me know if he came up with anything.
Okay. I know Troy said they'd have to work with the school and getting, like, numbers, I mean, kids are walking around and all that stuff for the grant, so...
They just have to get support letters, you know, from the school and so forth. So, yeah, I had talked to Troy, it was after our last meeting and we had talked about that a little bit and that he would give us an update on it tonight.
That was a $200,000 grant, wasn't it?
I think so, I think that was the right number, you know, I did hear from Lindsay Parkhurst a few weeks ago too, just that there's a possibility of being some monies available for some type of project, you know, talking with her, she mentioned ADA a few times in our conversation, so I had sat down with Bob and Troy and we came up with a proposal for, it was 37 corners of sidewalk corners, to make them ADA compliant and down, which anytime we did sidewalks in that area, those corners are going to have to go that direction anyway, so the 37 corners would total about $120,000, which was the number that she had kind of thrown out at me as a possibility of receiving, so, we did, I did, wrote a letter and submitted it to her, so we'll wait to see if anything comes up, but, it was kind of a quick thing, she had called me on a Monday or a Tuesday and we had to have it tour by Thursday, so, that was a little bit of a scramble trying to, to come up, we've talked about streets and, you know, that really kind of didn't fall into the parameters of what was going to be eligible, but that whole idea of the corner sidewalks, the ADA compliant corner sidewalks, seemed to fit pretty good, so...
So you decided you submitted it?
Yes, yeah, well, I just had to submit a, a request, you know, and explain how the money would be spent and break it down, so Troy had done some work on numbers for me and, so we'll, we'll see if anything...
We're going to see her on Wednesday, I'll ask her about it.
Chief had talked to him, and told him, you know, the six o'clock committee of the whole meeting, so, and I haven't heard anything from him since then, so, we will stay active until, hopefully he comes in and we can get through that, otherwise we'll just push it to the regular voting board meeting. Mike, did you have anything for the board?
Mayor, the only thing we'd like to get moving on the advertisements...
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that, everybody had those in your mailbox, the three different advertisements, and, you know, we could take from any of them, combine...
Or throw them all out for that, yeah, if there's, if somebody's got a better thought, a sense of authorship is not imperative here. What I wanted to do is to get something effectively out that was succinct, but perhaps personalized it or was able to convey the village's view of themselves, and there was no magic in that, I went to your website and plagiarized from that, so, I figured you couldn't argue with that if it was on your website, so, but that was a thought. I'm not, yeah, you won't hurt my feelings if you'd like to go a different direction, but I think it's probably worthwhile the next week or so that move forward on approval of a draft and I can move to getting it placed, and then we'll see in a few weeks what the initial response is. One of the things I thought, in the electronic age, of course, I encourage individual applicants to submit via email or, or whatever, it's not, it's also a good idea to have a hard copy. I thought perhaps you, the hard copies would be sent to the village address and the electronic version sent directly to us, same, same product, different format, and that would then allow us to move in and begin to break them apart and develop our, the matrix that then we would share with you and give you a sort of a category by category comparison between the applicants. It's only a suggestion, I'd rather have everything come to the village, you know, it can easily be transferred to us, so, we'll all be seeing the same thing.
Right, I don't mind, you know, the emails going directly to you.
Okay, just one less step.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
So as far as the three different versions, anybody have thoughts on those or...
I thought, my preference was the one that had the, the Village of Peatown was a community filled with history, culture and great expectations, was the first one.
I liked that one, I liked the short also, like, to add that, like, maybe you can mix it up a little bit.
Okay.
Some of them are kind of like real long and real wordy.
Yeah.
But I like a little bit of each, shortened, condensed version.
Get, get a little, a little color in it, but, compress it, okay.
I mean, I think all of this is good information, I don't, I don't think there's really anything wrong with, with any of it, and you guys kind of had the expertise, you know, as far as putting it together, I just, there's nothing in any of them that I say, don't use, you know?
Yeah, I think the goal is you want whoever is reading it to understand what we're asking.
Right, right.
And, yeah, I didn't want to get over wordy, but, you're right, the more to the point, the better. I also left compensation open.
Right.
That way you can see what the market is and then determine the course of action accordingly.
Can you maybe add a sentence or something emphasizing that, you know, we are looking to, you know, expand our retail or, you know, business environment or...
An economic development note.
Yeah, or pro-business, or, you know, something like that, so...
Okay.
We put that challenge in there to somebody.
Yeah, someone who has some background in that would be most definitely encouraged to apply, okay.
But I'm like, Steve, I didn't want to do these, I, you know, just get it out there and...
Yeah, mix it up.
Yes.
Understood, okay.
Let's get it going, yeah.
I have a direction.
Very good.
Thank you.
That was easy.
May I mention my thoughts on going after CMAP?
Yeah, please.
Is that okay?
Yeah, had you talked to Troy about that, about the, his...
I did, I did, I don't think there was anything pending from CMAP relative to the village. I attended, there was a call for projects a week or so ago through the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, CMAP, and it's what they call their local technical assistance grants, and it really runs into a variety of areas. The one that I thought was of particular interest and, and I would suggest, the village considering, and there is no match required on this, and that is a positive thing, it would, it would involve bringing actual CMAP staff into the village to work on this project, but it's a planning priorities project, rather than me determining, you know, zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, whatever, whatever items there may be, capital improvement program, what this would do would allow the village and the administration to sit down with external staff to determine goals and objectives from a planning perspective. What I was thinking, given their timeframe, which, there would probably, approval would be late first, early second quarter of 2019 for them to actually approve an application, that would not be too far off from a new person coming in as administrator. My thought was that you would have the opportunity for CMAP to assist the village in looking at goals and objectives while you have a new person in there that could sit down and sort of develop their own learning curve in terms of what was already in, in place, what might need to be explored, updated, expanded, and allow that person to almost get a sense of authorship on some new initiatives, a kind of an orientation for the new person, along with bringing an assessment team in to work on various documents that are critical to, you know, the municipal health and welfare. It's due October 26th, I would, I complete the application, it's just part of what GMT is doing for the village, we're not looking for any additional remuneration or anything like that, I would give you the finished application, so if you could look horrified and say, why did you say this, or you could give the blessing and we could move forward, we've got enough wiggle room before the 26th of October to make it work, but I think it's a good, I mean, I think the timing is really good in terms of where you are and what you want to bring on, so, my suggestion is you allow me to move forward on that, if that's okay?
Definitely.
Thanks, okay, good.
Who are these people that you're referring to, that come in and...
It's staff for the, for CMAP, the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. If you recall, many years ago, there was a group called NIPSY, Northeastern Illinois Planning Commission, and another group called CATS, the Chicago Area Transportation Study. Not to get into great detail, but CATS was what they call the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Chicago metro area, but it was more transportation oriented, NIPSY was land use, housing, social services, that type of thing. The initiative was to merge those, and that's what CMAP is today. They have a significant professional staff, urban planners, transportation planners, the policy people, and they're a resource, I mean, and that's, that's what I'm looking for, is to tap into a resource. You can take their recommendations or you can leave them pretty much where you found them, but I just thought, another set of eyes, sometimes it's a forests and trees issue, sometimes you're so close to an issue that a different perspective is healthy and it allows you to look at something maybe a little differently. I'm not, I'm, I'm not assuming that there are major issues in the village, but this is a process that you can go through and, and bring some, some local talent into the community to assist you with it.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I thought so, so...
Good.
Okay, thanks.
Perfect. Hello, Dave.
Oh.
How are you, whenever you're ready, we're ready for you.
Actually, maybe I should recuse myself, I know him, yeah, and I think I, we're, we're, yeah, very friendly, so, if you want me to stay in the room...
Oh, you're good, this is our police pension board president, correct?
Ah, okay, I don't know him in that capacity.
Did...
Yeah, I have him here to pass around to the board here. Send me now? Take one and pass it around.
So who is the stranger? How you doing, Mike?
Mike is, Mike is the acting interim village administrator.
Have you been saying yes? Been way too long.
Yeah. Can you send that extra back down?
Yeah. Got enough? Thank you.
So Dave, you're standing right in front of the cameras, I just need to move you over a little bit there, there you go.
Well, it's the annual report, does the, is the auditor...
That's, it's seven o'clock.
That they're going to be...
Yeah, they'll be at seven.
...presentation.
Correct.
Okay, so, this is a summary coming from the actuarial report, showing the past couple of years here, we kind of stalled out the, just over a million dollars in total assets. When you look at the actuarial assets versus the ending assets, we're now a little more than $100,000 difference between those, and that's the gain on the, the investment portfolio in the stocks, we're limited to 10% based upon the amount of funds that we have that we can invest, so, actually, we're, on a market value basis, we're above the 10% because it's grown more, that segment of the investment portfolio has grown more than the other portion, and there's some discussion whether you can use book value or market value, we've been using book value to make our determination as to what we can invest, some say that you're supposed to balance it out each year, but that's where we are. The levy requirement under the actuarial analysis is coming up $343,000 for this year, last year was 278, you see a pretty upward trajectory in that levy requirement. last three years, the amount that has been funded by the village is under the actuarial requirement, levy requirement, in order to fund the, properly fund the pension liability. The total accrued liability under the actuarial analysis is 6.4 million, actually 6,386,000, of which we've got actuarial value of $1,004,000. So the unfunded liability is just under $5 million, which is the big number that is needing to be met. It's a true liability that is outstanding, is now reflected as such on the liability in the annual audit from the auditors. It's no longer just buried in the back in the footnotes.
Does the cause of the contribution shortfall, I mean, before these last three years, it looks like, you know, we contributed what was required, and so what changed, you know?
The numbers got big and the village didn't fund it.
There was a change in the way Will County did something with, and Marcy would be able to explain it, but that did change a little bit of what was happening, too.
The way Will County did what?
And that, it was...
There was something to do with the actual levy.
Right.
The portion actually comes from the actual real estate tax portion of levy is not the big number. It's, it did have to come out of the operating fund because there wasn't enough levy to cover it. But I believe that there was something that wasn't paid one year and then it was made up, but it then didn't get made up with additional funds. So, and alls I can do is come and make requests. Although I think the city party is finding that there might be other things you can do. What I believe is the city for funding. But they're grossly funded. They got...
Oh, where she's still.
Now, the one thing that I haven't included that's in the actuarial report that probably will look to add in the future is the line I'd have called normal costs, which is, in effect, if the, and I'm probably butchering the true definition of normal cost, but basically, as I incorporate it, it is what the annual cost of a pension fund would be if it was fully funded, in effect. So what the village requirement would have to be in order just to keep up if it was at the full funded level. So if we had, you know, had $6.4 million in the fund, how much would the village have to also then contribute each year? And the normal cost last year was $137,000, year before that was $118,000. So, and what do you have, payroll at just over $400,000? So your pension cost is running, and I think that's pretty, yeah, I don't have the number here, but it's around 25%. Twenty, 25% is not out of the ordinary for retirement, pension retirement programs to the, to payroll.
So how much was actually contributed by the village last year? Is that on here?
The village employer contribution, $163,970.
Okay.
Then the employee contribution there, roughly 10%, I don't remember the exact number of payroll that employees, officers pay in.
What's the history of this? How did we get a self-funded pension for the police?
Referendum.
So the citizens of Piattone voted to self-fund the Piattone pension?
This is, they joined the Downstate Pension Fund.
It went from IMRF to a Downstate Pension.
And the village citizens voted for that change?
That was by referendum.
That wasn't a village board decision, that was a village referendum?
It was a referendum. Part of the rationale behind at the time was that it was during the growing population and you're required, I believe it's 5,000 population, when you reach that, you're required...
Required to go.
...to change to the Downstate Pension. And it was anticipated that was just a year or two away and 15 years later.
So when we voted for that referendum, we created this mess, essentially?
The liability was there as IMRF or as police pension.
But it was a bigger pool as an IMRF, though.
The, one of the differences is that you can't, you get a bill from IMRF and you have to pay it. That's one of the big differences. The IMRF, the lives came out of, when I say lives, the officers that were then a members to the Downstate, the Piattone Pension, came out of IMRF at that point in time. Only their contributions then came out of IMRF into the newly funded pension. And there was a significant holiday that, because it was overfunded at IMRF, that the village had to pay basically nothing into IMRF because it was overfunded IMRF.
So we left our money back there when the police moved out?
The contributions that the village had made to IMRF for the sworn officers stayed. The only thing that came across to the new pension fund were the contributions the officers had made.
Do you remember when that referendum was?
2012, 2006, I think.
2006.
And when...
2005, 2006.
You first started putting your numbers together, didn't you have some like, really off-the-wall, like 7.5% that you were expecting returns on, and we never even came close to that? And that's what set what we were going to have to pay into this, and that's why we're so far behind now?
Every year, I ask for more than the levy. I explained that it was based upon 7.5%. It was also based upon 1978 life expectancy tables, which is what the state of Illinois required, requirements for the actuarial analysis is, were based on. That was, that was explained, and the village did not fund beyond the minimum requirements. And the last three years, underfunded the levy requirements. The other aspect is the way the analysis is done, it's an upward trajectory on the way that the calculation is done, is that it pushes it, the whole concept is to push it off. But at any time, the village can fund more than what's required.
Where's that going to come from? We only get so much.
You were saying that it was based upon, I'm saying, if you can fund it.
Did you ever, did you ever realize a 7.5% return?
No. Not when we can only invest in 10% of the stock market, so we got 90% in fixed instruments. We can't do more than that until we get over $2.5 million. Or you're looking for me to throw in cash? No. I mean, it's not possible.
I think the numbers that were presented originally were unrealistic, and it's gotten us in a bigger hole.
Every year, I laid out how much more in order to balance out our expected returns for, to what the actual yield was. The question was, is where can you come up with the money? I remember Trustee Jones, "It sounds like you're going to have some money."
Now?
So here's an opportunity to cover a liability that's on your books. You're selling an asset, a good thing to do with the sale of assets is to pay down liability. It's a liability that's been accruing for a few years. You're selling an asset that accrued for several years. Time to cover that liability with those funds. But I can only come and make requests.
Very good. Anything, any other questions for the board?
Sure. 2018, the annual payroll for the police department was $445,000, and then your request would be $278,000 additional to cover their pensions.
$278,000 is the actuarial requirement in order to fund, to meet the full funding under the state of Illinois formula by the 30-year age in the fund. So back in 2013, that number was $139,000. 143, 159, 256, 311, 278, and now 343.
Any idea what happened between 15 and 16, that it went from 159 to 256? That's a big jump.
I believe that was the year that the, there were, I believe there were two things, is that the interest rate in the formula dropped, I think to 5% that year from the 7.5. And about that same timeframe, the adjusted life expectancy table went to, I don't remember what year it was, went from 1978 to 2000 or something.
So they rewrote the rules in the calculation?
There were some adjustments in the assumptions used as mandated in the formula.
Okay, and you're saying that next year we should budget $343,000 towards the...
The actuarial requirement to fund in order to stay on, on the 30-year projected to fully fund takes $343,000, half, I think it's 4.5%, which on a $1,004 portfolio, of which I can only be 10% in the stock market, can't do.
And one, you said it's at 2.5 million that you can then do more?
At 2.5 million is when it goes up, and then at 5 million, it goes up more. So there's different thresholds.
So it's like 20% then, or 30? I mean, do you have an A?
I think at 5 million, it's 40%. And I don't remember, 2.5, it's somewhere in there. And plus, you get enough to where instead of just doing CDs, then you can start looking at some, not municipal, but rated bonds, and start getting a little bit longer in your ladder. But that comes more value risk, the longer option you go. But then you start to get enough to where you can, instead of trying to ladder a million dollars into a, into a portfolio of bonds, your costs are going to eat you up. It's not going to do significant over what you can just do by putting it out into the market for CMAP CDs.
And there's no pool of funds that, like, there's no, like, you can't join with other pension funds or anything like that?
Unfortunately, that would, you know, with all the discussion of wanting to merge pensions together, you know, discussions in Springfield on that, that would be one of the simplest things to do, is to allow the smaller pension funds to, although the state of Illinois didn't do the best in the downturn, but to have, you know, like an hip debt fund, sorry to use that one because that was one that had a lot of problems.
Right.
But a pooling fund where then you can say, you can invest as if you had 5 million...
Right.
...because you've got an investment manager that's managing that amount of money, that it makes sense.
Right. It'd be nice if we could get, you know, half a, you know, $500 million so you can actually make some money, you know, but... So you were alluding today, I think, to Aqua sales, which you were talking about, right? The pool of money. So of the $12.3 million, how much of it are you advocating that we should put towards the police pension fund today?
You've got an unfunded liability of 5 million.
So you would, you suggest us give $5 million to the pension?
It's an outstanding liability. It's a true liability that's out there.
I'm just trying to understand what your request is. So how much do we have to put in so that $5 million doesn't go any higher? I mean, I know it's a moving target, but, I mean, if we just invested, if we put in $343,000, but we still only get 2% or 3% interest, that number's going to go higher, correct?
Correct. Even if we get the 4.5%,
Yeah.
...the number's going to go higher. Because the way they calculate it, it's pushed off the last 10 years under this 30 years, and we're 10 years into it now, so there's probably 20 years to go. You start to get the exponential spot on the curve. And it's just the way they do the calculation, the way it's pushed off.
What's been the major return on the 10% of stock investments?
I don't have the exact number on that. That's...
What would you guess?
Well, it's, we put $50,000 in, it's $100,000, but it's been over, not all of it was in before '08, so it's been almost a 10-year. So you're what, 20% without doing the time value throwing in there? But, yeah, around 20% over 10 years.
Just to clarify, if we, if we put the $5 million in it today, we have not solved the problem, have we?
No, you've done, the, the...
This will come back.
...portion has been met. You still have an issue of looking at the fact that you've got roughly a 20% cost for retirement to your cost of police salaries. That still exists. If there was, 5 million came in, then you'd have about a $130,000 annual contribution that would still need to be made for the ongoing current liability versus past liability.
But then when we get the exponential part of the curve, it's going to get worse.
That, the 5 million, no, because the, the 5 million is, I'll throw one castle, as long as we don't go, you know, into the stock market, that stock market crash. Assuming that we can get around a plus 5% return with $5 million, then the unfunded liability that's being amortized is no longer being calculated out into this upward trajectory because it's already funded. So we're no longer trying to fund the unfunded liability, we're just trying to maintain the current liability and fund the current structure.
Okay. So those are the two extremes. Is there a middle proposal that anybody can come up with that's in between giving $5 million today and ignoring it?
That's...
That's our job?
That's your job.
Okay. But I guess the biggest number is if we can at least get to 2.5 million, then it gives you a little more flexibility, you know, in your best, you know, investing, correct?
Correct.
I mean, you know, 5 million would be ideal, but anyway, something to think about, so... So what, so our actual value right now is 1.4?
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes. The basis is 1.0. 1,461,000 is the actuarial value.
That's, okay. So if we put in 1.1 million, it'd be over 2.5, correct?
Correct.
Are there many villages our size that are fully funded? Are there many villages our size that are fully funded?
There are villages that are fully funded. I don't know, I can't give you names, but I, I know there are some. And the one thing that Supreme Court, when they were talking about, you know, changing the pensions, and they, or the argument that the state was making to uphold their law to change was that it was a, it was a hardship, and the Supreme Court, albeit keeping in mind that the trusts, or the judges are all under a pension as well, but their response was, is that you can't create a crisis and then ask for relief on a crisis you created.
So if we, so if we had, if we had stayed where we were 12 years ago, we are less than 5,000 people, we still could have been covered by the IMRF.
You would have been covered by the IMRF, you would have gotten an annual bill from the IMRF that you would have to have paid.
Right. But it would be significantly less than these numbers here.
Not necessarily.
But again, that's, that's kind of hindsight, too, you know, which is always, as we know, 2020.
Yep.
I think the idea, you know, at that time, I think still was a, was a valid idea. You know, part of it also was a way to retain officers, you know, with the Downstate Pension, you know, as well as looking at being forced to go there, you know, in a relatively short period of time, kind of made it, the idea to put it on a referendum, you know, put it out to the community.
Yep. So clearly what the community wanted.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
So can we, how do we start? I mean, we...
Well, and I know that, I mean, this has been a conversation we've had before, and I think we'll, we will talk, you know, moving forward. I know I've talked with Marcy a little bit about it, so we'll, we'll have to come up with some kind of thoughts to bring back to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely want to hear Marcy's story, and Mike, I'd like your input on this, too. I'm sure this isn't the first pension issue I've run across, so...
Yeah.
Anything else for the committee of the whole? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Bowden, seconded by Trustee Jones.
Who was Mr.?
I'm sorry.
Who was Wayne?
I'm sorry. Motion by Trustee Parker, seconded by Trustee Jones. You guys' voices sound like...
Sorry.
Not nearly loud enough. Parker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
March.
Yes.
Revka.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Kent.
Yes.
We will re-adjourn, or re-adjourn, we will start the regular village board meeting at 7 o'clock.